Wayne, is it permissible for us to go ahead and get this meeting started at three o'clock? All right, good.
Welcome you to our regularly scheduled meeting. We'll start the meeting with Chaplain Mel Hacker of the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office giving our invocation, followed by Jeb Ball leading us in a pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand. Chaplain.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's good to be here. I'm Reverend Mel Hacker, pastor of the New Day Ministries here in Baymanet for 21 years. The last seven years have served as chaplain here in Baldwin County Sheriff's Office and have been blessed by the opportunity to serve as full-time chaplain now in our corrections facility and to have the awesome opportunity to minister to our inmates and to just share the good news of Jesus with them. So I appreciate this commission and our share for seeing the importance in that. Let's bow our heads and let's pray this morning. Heavenly Father, we just come to you, Lord, because we acknowledge that we are who we are because of what you've done for us. We thank you for breathing our lungs this morning, Lord, that gives us another opportunity to serve you today. And I pray, Lord, that in the time that you've blessed us with, Lord, that we would use it to our advantage, Lord, to cause the citizens of this county, Lord, and for all that are involved in leadership and our municipalities and those who are serving in all forms of government, Lord, we pray special blessing over them. We thank you, Lord, for watching over our county this past weekend. If so many have traveled our roads and are visiting our attractions and businesses, we pray, God, you continue to bring increase and favor and blessing to this place. Lord, I thank you for this commission that stands, Lord, appointed by you, Lord, to give governance to, Lord, this community. And I pray, God, that you would give them wisdom, Lord, to know the things and the thoughts that you have for this county. I pray a special blessing over the meeting today and that all that will take place, Lord, will be according to your plan and your will. And we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Wayne, if you would, lead us into our meeting. Do we need to have someone speak on the front end or how do you want to do that?
Mr. Chairman, we'll handle it at that item, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Okay.
It's coming up. It'll be one of the first items we handle and we'll do that.
Very good. Thank you.
But, Mr. Chairman, good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chairman. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the June 15, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the minutes of April 15, 2021, regular meeting.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the minutes of June 15. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have administration items that are next. We have five of those. I do want to make mention that regarding BA4, the correct name of the entity is the Family Promise of Baldwin County Incorporated. In the item, it had Family Promise Incorporated at Baldwin County, Alabama, but it's Baldwin County Incorporated. That was for BA4. But Mr. Chairman, staff recommends approval of BA1 through BA5.
Go move. Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve items BA1 through BA5. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, next are the Archives and History. We have one item, and this is regarding the Fort Memes Historic Site. In your agenda item, I want to thank the Highway Department for their work at Fort Memes, helping out Fort Memes with some stump removal. And there is a donation that's in the item that will be given on their effort and their time to the Fort Memes. But also, we have Ms. Claudia Campbell here regarding Fort Memes. Ms. Campbell's been involved in Fort Memes for many years and very passionate about Fort Memes. And I heard her come forward. She had several items she wanted to discuss regarding Fort Memes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for letting me come and talk to you. I guess I am pretty passionate about Fort Memes. I grew up with it. I think I told you my mother was, my father was plowing a field out near Fort Memes, and we were supposed to be picking up potatoes, but instead we found all these little pieces of pottery and little sharp-pointed rocks that I found out were arrowheads. And so my mother just wrote to everybody in the world, including Disney and the governor and all the state and local and national legislators, trying to get them behind supporting and acknowledging Fort Memes as a historic site. So as I said plenty of times, we had Fort Memes for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And so I just grew up loving it. My grandchildren, granddaughter said once to a little girl, "Oh, yeah, we own this. We're here all the time." So I was really surprised to hear, but I guess she's right in the midst of it, too. About two years ago, I came to you asking if the county might possibly receive Fort Memes if Alabama Historical Commission would offer it to you. And so along came the pandemic and so many things have been going on. But I did write to the Alabama Historical Commission, Lisa Jones. After, I'll back up a little, after the hurricane, we had 25 trees down inside the archaeological area, on the stockade and just everywhere, huge pine trees, 75 years old. And so there was a lot of damage. Our blockhouse didn't get damaged, though, nor the museum. But whenever we had brought the blockhouse in, the Fort Memes Restoration Association, we were giving the deed to that. And I just held on to it. I didn't want it to be given to anybody else. So we did ask the Historical Commission if they would insure the property. And so I sent them the pictures of the storm damage. And as you know, Baldwin County does all the maintenance on the grounds there and also provides the port-a-lait, and that is cleaned and emptied every week. And it's a great service to that. So in January, AHC sent down a couple of workers and they assessed the damage, which was a large amount. But in the meantime, they said Baldwin County could move all the trees. I'm probably saying too much, but anyway, there was some confusion, who does what and how can we do whatever, because they didn't want us to drag the trees across the property. And anyway, magically, the trees were removed before they arrived. And I think FEMA did that. And they did a beautiful job. Nothing was messed up. And I thank Madison Steel for that. But then they came in and they put six kiosks, which is the first time they've put something permanent at Fort Memes in 70 years. That's the first thing they've done. They usually shake their head because to go into Fort Memes, you have to go through a hunting camp, I mean, a fishing camp, which all the fishermen love. But historic people don't really love coming through the camp. So years ago, I think I told you or y'all knew that the 70 acres behind Fort Memes had come up for sale. And somehow that has not moved along. The landowner held off on cutting the property and said he has not been contacted nor made an offer. I may be wrong on that, but that's what he told me. So the land is available. It has not been prepped for replanning yet. But in my vision for Fort Memes, there's a lot of acreage back there. And we presently have a five-acre site owned by the Historical Commission. And I would like for us to be able to get that 70 acres in the back, maybe for a museum, for real bathrooms, parking area, and an Indian village. In my letter to AHC in June, am I getting everybody confused? In my letter, I had asked that they give the site to Baldwin County. And Lisa Jones is the executive director there. And she said that, I had to send it a couple of times, and she said that she had been in an accident and that she would come back and answer me later, which she did. And she said that at this time, they would be unable to give Fort Memes to the Fort Memes Restoration Association, which is not what I asked. I asked that it be given to Baldwin County. And so I did call our state Senator Greg Allbritton, who is on a committee with AHC, and he said he would get right to it this week. So also, I talked to Joe Faust, who has been supportive of the project at Fort Memes. So there's a lot going on in there. I think AHC's interest has never been great at Fort Memes, except in January, when they put these six kiosks in place. And so I think maybe with some, excuse me, requests from the state legislative delegation, they may decide to give the site to us. In the meantime, I hate to miss the opportunity on the 70 acres, which is behind it, which is the only place we could do anything to make this nationally historic site something that many, many people will want to come and see. I have people come in now. My phone rings all the time. I see an out-of-state number, and sometimes I'm hesitant in answering that because, like everybody, I get all these calls, you know, for things that are irrelevant to me. But people are coming to this site on a daily basis, and they want to know about it, all sort of calls. So anyway, I'm hoping that Baldwin County can get together. I know the legislative delegation would support this. I think Porch would support especially building a real Indian village there and a museum that would tell the whole story. I have great ideas that I had seen when I went on a trip up to Philadelphia, having a timeline, actual figurines that move and tell the story so that anyone could come in, even not during our reenactment weekends, and understand and hear the story of Fort Memes. There's also a historic battlefield grant that is available. And as a War of 1812 and Creek War site, there is a grant available. It's over, up to and over a million dollars. And I've been asked to send a letter to our Senator Shelby's office to see about their support. They would support this possibility of getting battlefield grant for that. So it seems that we would have a lot of support, but an offer would have to be made or requested from the landowner, Tom Bradley, who lives five miles north of me. So do you have any questions? Did I get it all confused? Or do you kind of see where I'm coming from? It gets to be a really big picture with AHC and the five-acre site where present stockade and reenactment is held, plus the 70-acre acquisition, hopefully 69.5 acquisition that is just north of the Fort Memes property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
What, do you have an estimate of what the cost of that, what they're asking for, that 70 acres?
You know, two years ago, the real estate agent said that this would go for about 3,000 an acre with it, with trees on it. And then it's been clear-cut. So it's available for us to, for anyone to do anything, you know, make a road, plant in particular places, plant longleaf pine. That was common here during that era. So I don't know. I'd say between 3,000 and 5,000 an acre, but I don't know that for sure. It would be great if he had decided to give it to the county. And but I know he bought a large amount of acreage, and like everyone, he wants to pay for it.
One other question. Ron, was there any money that was out there that we could use for this, for purchasing that, 70 acres? Is there any money out there available?
You mean like from other, like, the legislature?
That we've got, you know, that we have set aside, you know, for stuff like that.
Oh, you're talking about county money?
The only one that there is for a historical site is there's a piece of the leaseback that's been driven in one of the funds. Now, if that's for historical sites, but I can't actually, that's the commission's request.
Okay. That could be used for this, too, if we wanted to, if that's so.
Question?
Sure.
You mentioned 70 acres. Was there also not a desire to enter from that other area so you didn't have to go through the fish camp?
That's exactly right.
I know you were talking about the fish camp, but I want to make sure we clarify that.
The north side of that.
Do you need the whole 70 acres? Is it possible that he would sell a portion of it so that we could get?
I asked that. And he does not want to, he doesn't want to cut it up. But that doesn't mean if we purchased it, that that other, you know, 40 acres could be sold or 30 or whatever. I don't know why the county couldn't divide it and sell that.
Well, I don't know that there's a, you know, a desire.
Yeah, I don't know if the county can do that.
I'm just trying to think of a way to, I know that Representative Faust had tried to work on this, but there was some, there was some, I don't really know, because I don't have the facts on this, just what I've heard, is that there was some dispute as to the real estate agent that was being dealt with wasn't even representing the landowner. Is that not?
That's what it seemed like. He told Mr. Faust and I that he thought it would be 3,000 an acre.
So he was not even the--
But the landowner said he was never contacted by anyone official.
So there was, it was never a listed piece of property?
No.
And it's not listed now?
No, it's not.
But it may be available.
But it is, it may be available.
Let's do this, if we could. Wayne, if you would, let's make an official request of the property owner to see the status of it, the availability of all our portions of it, and the asking price, so we can then possibly move forward with this. I think that would be the way for us to get the facts straight.
That would be wonderful.
And be able to consider this going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. I want to ask Ron, weren't you working on this a long time before? And know the real price of what this was going to cost and stuff?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I worked with a Realtor. The price was, that he quoted was not what the landowner agreed to. And I did talk to the landowner, and he appeared to be open to negotiation on the property. I think Chairman Davis is correct, and the right avenue is to just reach out directly to the landowner and determine exactly what his thoughts and desires are, if he does want to sell the property or if he doesn't. And that way, you can get to, get to the bottom of the matter rather quickly on this. But he is, my last conversation with him is he is amenable to talk about it at any time.
Good. To me, that makes sense because there may be some timelines that the owner needs to spread the payments over. We just need to find out what the landowner would like and then plug that into what we would like to see how we can move it forward. So, Wayne, if you would, let's--
Yes, sir.
--you and Ron and others pursue that. And Ms. Campbell, we'll get back with you as soon as we know something.
Okay. And in the meantime, I will be working with AHC to see if they might change their mind not to give the property to Fort Memes Restoration Association, but to Baldwin County, because Felicia, it would go to Archives and History and would work, we would work with her through that. I think their interest was minimal, and then I guess it's, they've changed their mind now. In the meantime, I'd like to invite you all to the 2021 reenactment. This year, we have the Indians on the poster. The old saying, "Good Lord's willing and the creek don't rise," came about 200-plus years ago. And we have the Indians on here this year. The creeks are rising again because we missed 2020, the first time in 32 years. So I hope you all consider coming. Jeb, we hope to see you there. I know you've been disappointed some of our events were canceled, but that was just about, we just couldn't do any better than that. And I'll give each one of you one of these, okay?
All right.
do any better than that. And I'll give each one of you one of these, okay? Also, I did want to let you know the volunteer fire department in Tinsall, which I'm on, the founder and board member and secretary treasurer. We will soon be inviting you to an open house, probably in September of our new building. So we're very proud of that, too. So Tinsall, a little spot in the road, is coming along as we can. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add also, with Fort Memes, it's on a historic tour app site, so that gets used a lot. Also, one of the problems with Fort Memes is there's no handicap accessible parking. The parking lot's at an angle. I think the goal would be to, if we get some additional property, to build some parking that would be sufficient for accessibility, and also maybe for some bus parking for schoolchildren and other groups like that, Mr. Chairman. On BC1, staff does recommend approval of that regarding stump removals and the donations, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. Will you approve item number BC1, was the stump removal?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve BC1. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And thank you very much for that stump removal. I appreciate all the county does.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, next is Brat's items. We have one, BD1. Staff recommends approval of the one item.
Chairman, I'll make a motion. Will you approve item number BD1?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the Brat's item BD1. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, next are the budget and purchasing items. We have 17 of those, BE1 through BE17. Staff recommends approval of each of the items.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to approve the items under the topic BE, BE1 through BE17. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, next is building inspections. We have one item for that, BF1. Staff recommends approval of item VF1.
So moved.
We've got a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve item BF1. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, next is elected officials. We have one item, BJ1, which staff recommends approval of that item.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. Will you approve item number BJ1?
We've got a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve item BJ1. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved.
Mr. Chairman, next, we have environmental management. We have two items, BL1 and BL2. Staff recommends approval of both items.
Chairman, make a motion. Will you approve items on BL1 through BL2?
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the environmental items, BL1 and BL2. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, next, we have finance and accounting. We have five items. There are a couple of things we need to discuss with this one. From the work session discussion, BM2 has been modified, and that recommendation is in front of you. We, to nullify the previously approved commission action for Gomaesa money, and approve the allocation of ARPA funds for the landfill recycling facility for BM2. So make note of that, Mr. Chairman, that funding has changed. Also, with BM3, regarding Mudroll Solutions, the agreement, complete agreement's attached. And also, the same with BM5 for Tyler Technologies, the original agreement is attached, and you have it. So staff recommends, with those comments, staff recommends approval of BM1 through BN5.
So moved.
We've got a motion on items under finance and accounting. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve items BN1 through BN5. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, next is highway items. We have five of those. A couple of comments for those, too, please. For BN1, the road name and the staff recommendation was changed from Cedar Point to Cedar Street. And then also, there was a replacement attachment regarding information regarding driveways that may be removed or modified in the future. That's for BN1. And BN4, you have letters of support for the RACE grant that you have in your packet. So, Mr. Chairman, with those comments, staff recommends approval of BN1 through BN5.
So moved.
We've got a motion on items BN1 through BN5. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second on items BN1 through BN5. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, next are personnel items. We have 10 of those, BQ1 through BQ10. Staff recommends approval of each of those items.
So moved.
We've got a motion on personnel items. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second on items BQ1 through BQ10. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, next are planning and zoning. We have two items, BR1 and BR2. Staff recommends approval of both those items.
So moved.
All right. We've got a motion on the planning and zoning items, BR1 and BR2. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on those two items. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, next, we don't have any presentations. We don't have any scheduled public hearings either, Mr. Chairman. That brings us down to committee reports, and the first item under committee reports is the payment of the bills.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make the motion to pay bills totaling $18,323,051.51, with the exception of those vendors or commissioners that request to be pulled. I didn't check to see if you had any.
I think yeah, there's one there.
For him. 165 is going to be the one that we'll pull. Of this amount, $12,155,037.71 is payable to the Baldwin County Board of Education, and $753,806.3 is payable to the Gulf Coast Board of Education for their portion of the sales and use tax.
All right. We have a motion from the finance chairman. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the bills, with the exception of item 165. All in favor signify by saying aye. Let the record reflect that I will abstain from voting on this.
You don't have to say on this one.
I can vote, this is everything but that item. Okay. All right. So let's redo that. Let's, we've got a motion and a second to pay all the bills, with the exception of item 165. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay item number 165.
And I'll second that.
So we've got a motion and a second on item 165. Let the record reflect that I'm abstaining from voting on item 165. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, next is the notification of interim payments approved by the clerk treasurer under county policy. Staff recommendation is to make the attached interim payments made by the clerk treasurer totaling $4,839,588.58, and make that part of the record. Mr. Chairman, next are the discussion items. We had one introduction this morning of Mr. Brownlove from the American Veterans, although I don't see him here this morning, Mr. Chairman. May we table this item for a future meeting, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. Please do. Reach out to him and let him know that when it's convenient for him to reconvene with us, we look forward to it.
We'll be glad to do that.
Do I need to make a motion on that, Brian? Okay.
The personal items was discussed in the work session with Deidre, so I don't know if there's any action necessary for that one. I think she mentioned bringing back an item after she talks to some of the state offices under planning and zoning for the amendments to the subregs. Can I ask Mr. King to come forward? I think what they're asking for, too, Mr. Chairman, is just to, the...
Hang on, wait.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Didn't we say that we was going to go ahead?
We're going to separate those two out, and go ahead and vote on Juneteenth.
So we're going to vote on the Juneteenth holiday. We were waiting to hear back, and I have relayed the message to Deidre that the state offices, from what it appears on the court calendar, are open on Thursday, December 23rd, which means the courthouses would be open. I have had conversations with the sheriff. In that case, he is taking off that day as well, but he will staff the courthouses as properly needed if they choose to remain open. You just never know about them. Right now, the state is open on December 23rd. It would not affect our offices if we decide a later date to take off on that day as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess that brings us down just to the one item regarding Juneteenth, recognize the Juneteenth as a holiday.
All right. I do have a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and a second to recognize June 19th as the Juneteenth recognition, consistent with the state and the national holiday schedule. Any other discussions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, next is the planning and zoning. This is a discussion regarding the subregs. I think Mr. Brown just wanted to make you aware that these are coming forward, and Mr. King can, again, discuss those if need be about what items are coming forward.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do, if it's acceptable to the chair, is just briefly comment on the bullet point items in your agenda item. So commissioners, I'll begin with, you'll see your first bullet point item, review of post-2008 regulation changes and potential reversion to 2008 language as appropriate. So the commissioner will call the first of a series of subdivision regulations amendments occurred in 2012, 2015, 2018, I believe, 2019, and 2020. Talking about 2008 language, a good example that if you look at your next-to-last item right there, this is just a brief example, changing development permit to preliminary plat, not changing the process, but just simply changing the name. The preliminary plat term is a bit more widespread used, at least locally, and I think that will eliminate some confusion. Some of these amendments are simply to eliminate confusion in how things are identified. So that's one possible amendment. You'll look at your second bullet point item, providing additional options to applicants regarding wetlands on proposed subdivisions, while simultaneously ensuring protection of those wetlands. A possible example of that, commissioners, in the event that you have what we call a large lot subdivision, where suppose the request is all lots or 20 acres or greater, delineating wetlands on a very large piece of property could be an enormous cost to the applicant. So a possible allowance there on those large lot subdivisions would be to allow the applicant to reflect the county's wetland data on their subdivision plat. That's one possible enhancement. You'll notice the bullet point adjustment to sidewalk construction timing requirements, possibly requiring that, again, a possible amendment would be to require that item to be installed prior to granting a final plat is one possible consideration. You'll see the bullet point incorporation of provisions related to broadband access for new developments, and a possibility there may be that on larger subdivisions where improvements are being installed, at the time utilities are installed, possibly installing conduit that would allow a provider to install broadband, whether that be fiber or whatever method they use. But the conduit would be in the ground for it. That's a possible amendment. And then just general cleanup and clarification to remove ambiguity from the public and incorporate industry standard language. Any document, of course, is going to require updates from time to time. But a brief example of that, for example, it appears that some legislation occurred this year, the term extraterritorial jurisdiction, for example, that may be a retired term, and replacing that with planning jurisdiction, among other routine changes. Changing planned development to multi-unit development or multiple occupancy project, there's a great deal of confusion in terminology, because in the subdivision regulations, we have a planned development. In the zoning ordinance, we have a planned residential development, and a planned commercial development, and a planned industrial development. And just the similarity in the terms makes the zoning topic and the subdivision topic a bit confusing. By using possibly multiple unit or multiple occupancy project may eliminate some confusion between the two different documents. And then finally, Chairman, commissioners, another item, not on your list, but the appeals process. So currently, if a subdivision is denied by the planning commission, there is the ability to appeal that decision to the county commission. A possible amendment would remove that requirement, or remove that allowance of appealing to the county commission, and give the applicant the ability to file a case with Circuit Court. And so commissioners, that's just, this is not an exhaustive list by any means. Obviously, with any documents, some of the amendments are going to be very minor, just to clean up language as things modernize. But this was just to introduce the process to the commission, to the public, to know that this is coming forward. And as a staff member, I'm happy to answer questions, and we can delve deeper into seeing any of these items if we need to.
I've got a question on the, you know, the one you mentioned about the appeals process. At one time, it was where they appealed to the Circuit Court, not to us. We didn't, it never, it never came to the commission. It went to the planning commission, and if they appealed it, it was appealed to Circuit Court.
Well, that's what you're saying, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, sir.
That's the plan we want to go back to, because I know it was changed to let the commission. But I think the thing with the Circuit Court is the best way to handle that one.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, that is a possible amendment. That is definitely a possible amendment. It would remove that appeal to the county commission, and they would, the applicant, if they wish to appeal, would take that directly up to Circuit Court.
Because that's what it was originally, when it was adopted, when the planning commission was set up. It was set up like that.
Yes, sir. So some of the prior versions of the subdivision regulations, that was the procedure.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think these are the first series. As you know, we've been in discussions with many municipalities, and they have some discussions they've had with us about some regulations they would like to see us to develop. And so we'll be working in close contact with them as well, to make sure that we're all consistent in what we're doing. So this will be the first of probably a series of amendments on the subregs. Mr. Chairman, I don't think any action necessary on that. I just wanted to update the commission on that.
Any other questions or comments at this point? All right. Hearing none. Appreciate the update, and keep us posted, all right?
Yes, sir. Thank you, commissioners. Have a great day.
All right. Next, we go to commissioner request.
Do we approve that? Do we have to approve it?
No, sir. That was just for information purposes.
Just information. All right. Commission request. Skip?
No, no question.
Elizo? Jeb?
Yes, sir.
I do have one. I've shared it with you. I think we need to explore offering a reward for the conviction of those that stole catalytic converters from our Brat's buses. And as part of that, we also need to look and make sure that we've got appropriate security for all of our buildings. I know we think we do, but obviously, someone found out a way to get to those buses. I had mentioned in my email to you, possibly $500. I'm not sure, quote, "that's enough." But it just incents me to have things stolen that's for the public good. And maybe we can get a report from Matthew on the status of where we are. And it's not only the ones that take the catalytic converters, it's the ones that they sell them to. And this is a serious problem, and I hate that we are having to experience it. But let's hope this is our only experience with this kind of action. So that's just my comment on that topic.
Just to give you, just an update on that, those buses are not in a building. Those buses are in a school parking lot that we utilize here in Baymanet. So it's not secured. It's not, you know, it's open to the public. So I think Brian and his team were looking at putting in some type of security measures as far as a camera system. I know the City of Baymanet Police Department is working the case tirelessly with setting up stuff to try to catch them next time, but.
Was there any way we can modify those vehicles with a guard or something they can put into it to keep them from stealing them?
Good, good question.
I mean, there's got to be something there that we can do to stop that.
Yeah. That's a good question, Commissioner. I don't know that answer, but we can certainly inquire with mechanics and so forth.
I mean, it's a lot of problems, you know. If you create something, you know, a cover or something, you know, a shield or something over it.
Yeah, there may be other steps.
It makes it harder for them to get to, you know.
Yes, and that's a great, great question. We'll discuss that with some of our mechanic staff and see if we can make that happen.
Good. And Jeb, thanks for that, because that does explain the ease of access. And Brian and his people will do whatever's necessary to make sure that it's not easy to do again.
Mr. Chairman, so were you making a request that we offer a reward? Because I haven't heard any other discussion from that. Are we allowed to offer a reward?
See, I don't know. That was just my reaction to seeing, and I just wanted to get the topic on the table. Skip, do you know if we've?
I've never, I don't know.
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to look.
I don't know. We've never offered a reward before, but.
Well, the chairman, out of his personal resources, would commit $500 to such a thing, because this is the start of something horrible, and the sooner we can address it, the better off we'll be. And I'm not trying to be a hero or anything, but money talks, and the bad guys will listen, and other bad guys will turn in some bad guys.
I would, I would wait and seek legal advice before you did that, because
Sure.
that could violate how much money you could spend in a day as an elected official, so.
Well, possibly so. But I said that it would be paid after a conviction, and being arrested is just the start of a process. But anyway, we'll...
And we've had, I know just since we've been elected, our mowers have been vandalized with dirt being put in the, in the gas tanks. Isn't that right? Didn't we have some situations?
I don't recall that. I don't recall that.
Mm-hmm. So, so, I mean, vandalism takes two forms, you know, taking something off of it and stealing it plus destroying it, you know? It's kind of a two-way street there. We've had other...
Well, but both streets are hoodlums.
That's what I'm saying, and so it's not, this is not the first time we've had something happen that I know of.
I'm not suggesting it's the first time, and I'm not suggesting it'll be the last time. I'm just telling you that we need to put our foot down, and I'm willing to do that. And if we need to, and can do something officially as a commission, fine. If not, we'll do it another way.
Yep, I'll, I'll look into it.
Look into that, please, sir. Thank you.
However, the buses do sound really cool when they ride around the square with no catalytic converter on them. Just to let you know, you can hear them coming from a long way away. You know your ride will be there.
Well, some of the trucks that pass me on the road, if all of us sounded like some of those trucks, and I'm not talking 18-wheelers, I'm talking things that have to climb in and fall out of, and if you drive those, that's your choice. But if we all sounded like that, we'd be deaf. That's just Joe's comment. Thank you. All right, what about any addenda?
Mr. Chairman, we have one addenda, I believe, on some of the action during, that we discussed during the executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Connor, after I confirmed that I don't have a conflict in this Purdue Pharma bankruptcy, left me the required language for the motion that y'all need to adopt in order to take advantage of the potential settlement in the bankruptcy case. So that being said, I recommend that the county commission make a motion to approve the Chapter 11 Plan of Reorganization in connection with that certain bankruptcy case styled in Ray Purdue Pharma LP et al., case number 19-23649 in the Bankruptcy Court of the Southern District of New York, and authorize the chairman, staff, and the county's attorneys to execute any documents and to take any and all actions deemed necessary to effect and/or confirm the county's vote in favor of the plan.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to take action described by our attorney dealing with the opioid situation. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Minister's report. I don't have a report, so we'll skip on down to the county attorney's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand we'll need to reconvene executive session at the end of this meeting and then hope we'll need to, we'll need to reconvene for a, for a vote afterwards. Okay, all right. So I'll, when the time comes, just kick it to me and I'll get us in that executive session.
All right. Do we have any public comments? Anyone from the general public that would like to say? Seeing none, how about our press questions? Do we have any from the press? Thank you. Commissioner's comments? Any comments?
I don't have any today, sir.
I'd just, well, I'd just like to thank the staff again for, you know, what they, what they're all doing and continue the good work of getting this agenda out. It's a pretty good sized agenda again, so just thank each and every one of them and all the employees that, for what they do for the county. And also, we have one resident from Alberta, a long resident, Mr. Eddie Marhol, that passed away on the Fourth of July evening, so just want to send my condolences out to that family. They've, they've been very active within the community, and I just, you know, want to let them know I think their service is going to be next Sunday at their place. They call it the barn, they're going to be at their, at their farm, so. And I think that's Ron's, thanks Godfather's, so, yes. Thank you all very much for that.
Billy Joe?
I don't want to miss an opportunity. We, you know, we've had a few weeks since we've been here in a meeting to just be thankful for this past weekend. You know, I am proud to be an American. I am thankful to be an American, and I am, I love it when I hear people say, "God bless the USA, God bless Alabama, and God bless Ballin County."
I agree. Thank you so much. I've got three items, one of which is the holiday and the Fourth of July and all the things that it stands for. Billy Joe, you said it better than I could, but we all need to be mindful of that. Second item, dealing with Kayanne, you and Ron and your team generating and getting another FEMA check in excess of $21 million, I believe was the amount. We do want to pursue the process of seeing when the state will free up their 12 and a half percent because that's a pretty significant dollar now. And time is money and money matters and moving that needle. Thank you and your team for, for your efforts there. And then the third thing was the security to all of our county facilities. I touched on it relative to the catalytic converters, but I think we need to, Wayne, sit down with our insurance people and kind of go over some things and get proactive if there are things that we need to do to make our facilities, all of our facilities, safer. Then we ought to look at that and then see what it would cost us, and then the commission make a determination of whether that would be a good investment.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. King sent me a text just a minute ago saying that Napa Auto Parts has a guard that you can install over the catalytic converter. So we'll certainly reach out to them and see if we can...
Sure.
...make that happen.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, paradise is a wonderful place, and we attract all kind of people. And unfortunately, when you attract good people, that's when some of the bad guys come too. So we need to be mindful that, that's part of our responsibility, and that's the reason it weighs heavily on my heart. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will go to Brad to get us into executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend that the commission make, adopt a motion to go into executive session to discuss with the county attorney the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation, controversies not yet being litigated but eminently likely to be litigated, or eminently likely to be litigated if the governmental body pursues a proposed course of action. So after, there needs to be a motion and a second. I'll make a statement on the record, and then after the vote, we'll announce that we will reconvene the meeting.
All right, do I have a motion based on our attorney's recommendation?
I'm moving.
We've got a motion, how about a second? Got a motion and a second on our attorney's recommendation to go into executive session. All in favor signify.
Well, hold on.
Wait, you've got to do your part.
Yeah, I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Alabama, and this exception is applicable to the planned discussion, and so now call for the vote, sir.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay, and then after the executive session, we will reconvene in these chambers.
All right, very good. Thank you. Y'all bear with us.
The regular meeting of the Bowlin County Commission after we've been in executive session. Wayne, if you would, lead us into the things that we need to deal with at this point.
Chairman, as you know, we had an item that was to be discussed, and that is regarding the SB 107 and the actions from that. And so I think at this time, any discussions or motions would be appropriate.
Okay. Do we have anyone on the desk that has comments or discussion points before we go forward?
I would like to state for the record that this is in regards to an act, not SB 107. This is a law. It's in a Senate bill anymore. So if we can get that on the record, the correct act number and all that stuff, maybe Hope can give us that. That's what I would like to be talking about today, not Senate Bill 107.
Senate Bill 107 was passed into law as Act 2021-297.
297, all right. All right, relative to actions necessary or needed by the County Commission, Chair would entertain a motion for going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion pursuant to Act 2021-297, the motion to be made to provide notice to the municipalities in Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission currently enforces regulations regarding the inspection of construction, building permits, and enforcement of building codes, and that as of July 23 -- excuse me, July 26, 2023, the Bowlin County Commission will enforce these regulations in areas of Bowlin County outside the municipal corporate limits unless agreements are reached with the municipalities.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
We've got a motion and a second. What I'll refer to is Item 1, as stated by Commissioner Ball. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimous, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to do a roll call vote, please.
All right, if we could.
I'll have it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Your desk?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, all.
Mr. Chairman, on Item 2, I'd like to make a motion to provide notice to the municipalities in Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission would like to enter into agreements with municipalities to allow the municipalities who were regulating subdivision planning on July 1, 2021, to continue to regulate subdivision planning in the areas outside the municipal corporate limits that are inside the police jurisdiction as it lawfully existed on January 1, 2021, and for agreements to be considered by this commission at the next meeting on July 20, 2021.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimous, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to do a roll call vote, please.
All right, if we could.
I'll have it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Your desk?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, all.
Mr. Chairman, on Item 2, I'd like to make a motion to provide notice to the municipalities in Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission would like to enter into agreements with municipalities to allow the municipalities who were regulating subdivision planning on July 1, 2021, to continue to regulate subdivision planning in the areas outside the municipal corporate limits that are inside the police jurisdiction as it lawfully existed on January 1, 2021, and for agreements to be considered by this commission at the next meeting on July 20, 2021.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make another motion to provide notice to the municipalities of Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission adopted subdivision regulations in 1984 and currently regulates subdivision developments within the unincorporated areas of Bowlin County, and that on July 26, 2023, the Bowlin County Commission will begin regulating subdivision developments in all areas of Bowlin County outside the municipal corporate limits pursuant to Act 2021-297 as modified by Act 2021-297, unless agreements are made with the municipalities.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimous, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to do a roll call vote, please.
All right, if we could.
I'll have it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Your desk?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, all.
Mr. Chairman, on Item 2, I'd like to make a motion to provide notice to the municipalities in Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission would like to enter into agreements with municipalities to allow the municipalities who were regulating subdivision planning on July 1, 2021, to continue to regulate subdivision planning in the areas outside the municipal corporate limits that are inside the police jurisdiction as it lawfully existed on January 1, 2021, and for agreements to be considered by this commission at the next meeting on July 20, 2021.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. What I'll refer to is Item 1, as stated by Commissioner Ball. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimous, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to do a roll call vote, please.
All right, if we could.
I'll have it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Your desk?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, all.
Mr. Chairman, on Item 2, I'd like to make a motion to provide notice to the municipalities in Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission would like to enter into agreements with municipalities to allow the municipalities who were regulating subdivision planning on July 1, 2021, to continue to regulate subdivision planning in the areas outside the municipal corporate limits that are inside the police jurisdiction as it lawfully existed on January 1, 2021, and for agreements to be considered by this commission at the next meeting on July 20, 2021.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make another motion to provide notice to the municipalities of Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission adopted subdivision regulations in 1984 and currently regulates subdivision developments within the unincorporated areas of Bowlin County, and that on July 26, 2023, the Bowlin County Commission will begin regulating subdivision developments in all areas of Bowlin County outside the municipal corporate limits pursuant to Act 2021-297 as modified by Act 2021-297, unless agreements are made with the municipalities.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make another motion to provide notice to the municipalities of Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission would like to enter into agreements with municipalities to allow the municipalities who were regulating subdivision planning on July 1, 2021, to continue to regulate subdivision planning in the areas outside the municipal corporate limits that are inside the police jurisdiction as it lawfully existed on January 1, 2021, and for agreements to be considered by this commission at the next meeting on July 20, 2021.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimous, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to do a roll call vote, please.
All right, if we could.
I'll have it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Your desk?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, all.
Mr. Chairman, on Item 2, I'd like to make a motion to provide notice to the municipalities in Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission would like to enter into agreements with municipalities to allow the municipalities who were regulating subdivision planning on July 1, 2021, to continue to regulate subdivision planning in the areas outside the municipal corporate limits that are inside the police jurisdiction as it lawfully existed on January 1, 2021, and for agreements to be considered by this commission at the next meeting on July 20, 2021.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimous, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to do a roll call vote, please.
All right, if we could.
I'll have it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Your desk?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, all.
Mr. Chairman, on Item 2, I'd like to make a motion to provide notice to the municipalities in Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission would like to enter into agreements with municipalities to allow the municipalities who were regulating subdivision planning on July 1, 2021, to continue to regulate subdivision planning in the areas outside the municipal corporate limits that are inside the police jurisdiction as it lawfully existed on January 1, 2021, and for agreements to be considered by this commission at the next meeting on July 20, 2021.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimous, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to do a roll call vote, please.
All right, if we could.
I'll have it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Your desk?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, all.
Mr. Chairman, on Item 2, I'd like to make a motion to provide notice to the municipalities in Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission would like to enter into agreements with municipalities to allow the municipalities who were regulating subdivision planning on July 1, 2021, to continue to regulate subdivision planning in the areas outside the municipal corporate limits that are inside the police jurisdiction as it lawfully existed on January 1, 2021, and for agreements to be considered by this commission at the next meeting on July 20, 2021.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make another motion to provide notice to the municipalities of Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission adopted subdivision regulations in 1984 and currently regulates subdivision developments within the unincorporated areas of Bowlin County, and that on July 26, 2023, the Bowlin County Commission will begin regulating subdivision developments in all areas of Bowlin County outside the municipal corporate limits pursuant to Act 2021-297 as modified by Act 2021-297, unless agreements are made with the municipalities.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make another motion to provide notice to the municipalities of Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission would like to enter into agreements with municipalities to allow the municipalities who were regulating subdivision planning on July 1, 2021, to continue to regulate subdivision planning in the areas outside the municipal corporate limits that are inside the police jurisdiction as it lawfully existed on January 1, 2021, and for agreements to be considered by this commission at the next meeting on July 20, 2021.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimous, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to do a roll call vote, please.
All right, if we could.
I'll have it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Your desk?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, all.
Mr. Chairman, on Item 2, I'd like to make a motion to provide notice to the municipalities in Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission would like to enter into agreements with municipalities to allow the municipalities who were regulating subdivision planning on July 1, 2021, to continue to regulate subdivision planning in the areas outside the municipal corporate limits that are inside the police jurisdiction as it lawfully existed on January 1, 2021, and for agreements to be considered by this commission at the next meeting on July 20, 2021.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make another motion to provide notice to the municipalities of Bowlin County that the Bowlin County Commission adopted subdivision regulations in 1984 and currently regulates subdivision developments within the unincorporated areas of Bowlin County, and that on July 26, 2023, the Bowlin County Commission will begin regulating subdivision developments in all areas of Bowlin County outside the municipal corporate limits pursuant to Act 2021-297 as modified by Act 2021-297, unless agreements are made with the municipalities.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. As stated by Commissioner Ball, is there any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll see if Commissioner Gruber or somebody wanted to make the last motion.
Yes, my question, we authorize the chairman to send a written notice to each of the municipalities notifying them of the three previous votes.
Okay, got a motion and a second regarding the authorization of a letter from the chairman. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the business this morning.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
All right, we've got a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second to adjourn. Thank you all for your patience and help with all the matters dealing with Paradise. Thank you.